Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the December 6th Legislative Session for the Spokane City Council. Ms. Fister, would you go ahead and call the roll?
Council President Beggs.
Present.
Councilmember Burke.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Present.
Councilmember Mum.
Here.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
All right, and we're going to go a little bit out of order tonight. We don't have any proclamations. We don't have any boards and commissions. This is our second-to-last meeting of the year, looking around at all the council members, and so appreciating all the work that you do. We're going to start with Special Budget Ordinance 36162.
In this one, I'll read in its entirety. "Ordinance Number C 36162, an ordinance amending Ordinance Number C 35971 passed by the City Council, December 14, 2020, and entitled an ordinance adopting the annual budget of the city of Spokane for 2021, making appropriations the various funds of the city of Spokane government for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2021, and providing it shall take effect immediately upon passage and declaring an emergency. Whereas subsequent to the adoption of the 2021 budget, Ordinance Number C 35971 is above entitled and which passed the City Council, December 14, 2020, it was necessary to establish and make changes in the appropriations of various funds, which changes could not have been anticipated or known at the time of making such budget ordinance, namely to provide for up to $500,000 to the Fire Department for five mobile rapid COVID-19 vaccination facilities at city fire stations, and whereas the Fire Department has utilized some of these funds but largely no longer have need for rapid mobile vaccination facilities, and whereas the City Council intends to use the remainder of these funds totaling approximately $475,000 to provide support for shortfall in the Fire Department budget for the remainder of 2021, and whereas this ordinance has been on file in the City Clerk's office for five days, now therefore the city of Spokane does ordain Section 1 that Ordinance C 36051 is hereby repealed as of the effective date of this ordinance, provided that this repeal has no effect on the proprietary of any appropriations or payments made under the authority of Ordinance C 36051 prior to the effective date of this ordinance. Section 2, it is therefore by the City Council declared that an urgency and emergency exists for making the changes set forth herein. Such urgency and emergency arising from the need to provide additional resources to ensure that the Fire EMS Fund has sufficient budget capacity for 2021, and because of such need and urgency and emergency it exists for the passage of this ordinance and also because the same makes an appropriation, it shall take effect and be enforced immediately upon its passage upon the affirmative vote of one more than a majority of the City Council as provided by Section 19 of the City Charter."
All right, so, pretty self-explanatory now that you've heard it completely read, but essentially, we originally allocated $500,000 for these mobile vaccine clinics, and we've only needed to use $25,000. And the Fire Department has a pretty significant financial deficit due to overtime, due mostly to understaffing, and so part of filling that deficit is this special budget ordinance. There's another one coming as well. There is no requested public commentary on that. Any council commentary before we have a vote? All right, I'm not... Oh, Councilmember Wilkerson.
First of all, I just want to say thank you to Councilmember Mum. When this came forward to do our vaccine clinics at our fire station, it was a great idea. We allocated the money. It wasn't used as we thought it wasn't needed, and so this reallocation makes sense in order to meet the shortfall. So, we had to just pivot and make this change, so I supported also.
All right. All right, we'll go to a roll call. Councilmember Mum.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council Presidents and I. Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
Okay, that passes seven to zero. And we have several guests here tonight for hearings on the assessments for our business improvement districts, so I'm going to go to those hearings so that they can get back to their lives, and we'll first hear from the downtown parking and business improvement area. But Councilmember... Excuse me. Madam Clerk, if you'd like to read the hearing on that.
Hearing Item H2, Hearing on Final Reading, Ordinance C 36153, approving and confirming the 2022 assessments and assessment role for the downtown parking and business improvement area, prepared under Ordinance C 32923 as codified and amended in Chapter 4.31(c) Spokane municipal code.
All right, I see Chief Executive Officer Mark Richard. I see Elizabeth Hurka from staff, and Susan Horton, who I'm imagining is the Chair, or something like that. So, I'm not sure who's taking it away. Mark, I'll defer to you to start.
Thank you, Council President, councilmembers. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great, thank you so much. So, as you mentioned, Elizabeth is here. She'll be hopefully running a PowerPoint presentation through this new technology world we're living in, and then Sue Horton is actually sitting in as our sitting treasurer. I just think she should have questions on the budget.
Okay.
So, let me just start while Elizabeth is queuing that up and say, I think you received one complaint or objection to their assessment from a owner of a couple of restaurant establishments in downtown Spokane, and I just want to assure you, we feel their plight, first of all. It's a deep concern of ours in terms of the conditions of the economy as a result of the pandemic, and we're doing everything we possibly can. And so, just real briefly, in addition to the clean and safe services we provide around their neighborhood of the three different restaurants they have ownership in, we have hosted dozens of different events, several of those... I mean, dozens, probably over a dozen, right out in front of two of their operations. We participated directly with the Inlander in a holiday campaign where we've included their restaurants, and then we've also focused media attention on their businesses as well as provided video service to them. So, we've done video work that has turned into our ads for downtown Spokane, and we've provided that video footage to them at no additional cost, and that's just in addition to the clean and safe services, and I'm happy to take any questions you might have on that. So, again, my name is Mark Richard. I'm with the Downtown Spokane Partnership, and I want to thank you so much to the council for all of your work and help in us getting here. We have Councilwoman Stratton, who serves on our Business Improvement District Board, and then we have Councilwoman Wilkerson and Kinnear, that both serve on our DSP, our Downtown Spokane Partnership Board, as well as the mayor, and so we're very grateful for that. So, next, Elizabeth, we have... I just wanted to inform your audience, which is part of our job here tonight, is just to give a brief update of our organization. Want to let you know that our process of developing our management plan as well as the budget is extensive, so we take that through two different boards, get community input from our stakeholders, and all told, those board members add up to about 44 different board members that touch the management plan as it goes forward in draft form as well as the budget before it finally gets to your desk for your ultimate approval. So, next, I just want to touch on a few highlights of 2021, things that we were able to accomplish. Many of those courtesy of our partnership with the city of Spokane. So, first of all, we once again delivered an unqualified opinion on our 2020 audit of our financials, which is paramount, obviously, to making sure your constituents are cared for, that we are delivering a clean audit, and that our finances are managed effectively and efficiently. And then, second of all, we made some significant adjustments this year, as I know that the city has as well, in our wages in order to attract talent, and that's one of the things we'll talk about here in a minute. And so, in order for us to hire and retain employees, of which we were struggling with just as is pretty much every other employee in the area. Next, we had... We worked, as I mentioned, hand-in-hand, but I think a little over a year and a half to finally seek your approval on the update of our downtown plan. That happened in 2021. The entire board, staff, and our DSP board all went through an extensive training program led by Dr. Clark, DEI training, and she has delivered us a draft strategic plan, of which we will look to begin implementing on. Actually, we've... Staff has begun implementing a few of those items already, and then we'll look to prioritize the remainder of those into 2022. The... We did a little reorg in 2021 with our clean and safe team. We hired a operations director for that position, and I hope that the council and our customers are seeing the benefit of having an inside director that is creating a much more effective and efficient and responsive clean and safe team. Just in 2021, our clean team removed over 2,700 bags of trash, abated 2,500 graffiti tags, and painted 248 different walls that were... That had graffiti on them in the railroad viaducts alone. And then we also... And we did all that coordinating with your code enforcement and city law enforcement. In addition to that, we've taken our ambassadors through some extensive new training, not only in... At our own... With our own desire, but also to begin to get in alignment with the new terms of our contracts. So, all of your ambassadors are now trained not only in customer service, but they're trained in suicide prevention, first aid, and crisis intervention, and then we have two SEPTED-trained ambassadors that are working to try to provide advice to our customers about how they can make their property safer. In addition to that, our ambassadors, just in 2021, provided over 4,700 what we call hospitality assists, 141 police assists, 6,600 business contacts, 3,900 educate and advise assists. And then going a little bit deeper, the... In addition to those, just shifting gears, we launched a new program this year, which is a cultural diversity grant program, where we distributed over $25,000 to different organizations to provide or enhance existing events that help us to celebrate and showcase cultural diversity and experiences in our downtown area, which I think we've already hosted three of those, and they've just absolutely been amazing. We have launched an extensive survey of our ratepayers on public safety. We received over 390 responses to that as well. And then for the 2022 management priorities, so looking forward, we... As I mentioned, we will be working to implement our strategic plan on DEI, so a lot of work left to be done there. We have... Where our intention is, is to initiate a comprehensive communication strategy with our business and property owners to the south of the railroad tracks, working with the council and the mayor and our existing board to begin to bring clean and safe services south of the railroad tracks up to Third Avenue. And we will launch a more extensive, robust survey of all of our ratepayers as per our contract to make sure that we're gauging what their concerns are and our priorities that we should focus on in the coming year. Next up, with regards to the budget, I'll just touch pretty briefly on this. This... I just want to show the community, this is a broad capture of our gross revenues for the year. Just point out that part of this is a direct contribution from the city of Spokane, $100,000 that goes to augment our clean and safe services. We are also in discussion with councilmembers, and so Councilwoman Wilkerson and Kinnear and Stratton are familiar. We are hoping... Well, we will be applying for and seeking some funding to create some activation and beautification in the downtown area, in addition to the... As to the terms of our contract, hopefully receiving the city of Spokane's support for financial assistance to expand our services south of the railroad tracks. Next, I would move into expenses. And the main thing I just want to point out here, while you're just kind of... The community is able to kind of look at the chart here, is just that the pandemic has dealt us some significant and unique challenges in that, as I mentioned, we've not only been struggling to hire staff in order to perform the functions that we're obligated to provide, and in addition to that, we've been bottled up with the inability to hold as many events as we normally would. And so, what's happened is, on the one hand, we have committed over $100,000 in new expenditures for wages and benefits, and that's just for our clean and safe team, in order for us to, again, secure, and we are now fortunate to have a full team. And lastly on that, I would just point out that we... Our goal is, just as it was last year, the budget that you have in front of you is proposed to be a net deficit spend, and that is a result of not only those wages and benefits that we're having to pay to hire and retain employees, but it's also intentional, as it was last year, which is... We're... You know, we... The budget you passed last year was also a net deficit spend, and the intent here is, we're going to do everything we can within the confines of COVID to get those monies out to work for our customers through events, activation, marketing, and promotions. So, next slide, please. So, this slide is really... A lot of this is for your benefit, but we go through an annual process where we're analyzing what proportion of staff time is spent towards the DSP and the bid, and I know we've had many conversations about that, and so wanted to present that to you tonight, and happy to take any questions on that, and then also showed our intention around the beautification and place-making, if we are fortunate enough to receive some of those grant dollars. And then you can see a significant portion, almost $900,000, a little over $900,000, is going directly to our clean and safe services for our customers. Next slide, please. So, I'll just... I'm going to kind of breeze through this because I want to be very efficient with your time here. The... A couple of the goals, as I mentioned, in addition to the budget for 2022, are, we will be focused on establishing a minority and women-owned business council, so working together with stakeholders and community leaders in the downtown area to deepen our relationships and to strengthen those, as well as to help us to focus as we look to expand our services to the south, and in hopes of attracting women and minority-owned businesses to that showcase area. In addition to that, we will, as I mentioned, continue to work on the implementation of our strategic plan around DEI. We are proposing to form a bid expansion task force or work group, where we're going to work with some of our new customers to make sure that we are addressing their concerns, we're phasing things in the timing they see as most appropriate, and we are being very attentive and... Yeah, I guess I would just say attentive to the needs of our future customers. We will be working to expand our efforts on SEPTED, so Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. One of the things we're proposing in our management plan is that we would conduct a kind of a zone-wide SEPTED assessment, working with the Police Department as well as our trained staff, to really get a better understanding of some of the areas that are created by the environment, that perhaps we could work with our property owners to improve the safety and the sense of safety in the new area. Further, we will work to, obviously, mid-year. I think, according to Mr. Piccolo, is when we anticipate beginning work on this area officially, and prior to that, we'll work to hire and train our staff in order for us to do so, and then we'll also... We're working on some enhanced mobility for our team to be able to move more quickly and more adeptly in order to travel a larger geographic area. In addition to that, we are working to... We're going to work to reinvigorate the downtown safety stakeholders meetings. We're going to work to revive community service, as well as working directly and more intentionally with our community court partners, Judge Logan and her team, now that her team is able to function a little bit more with flexibility due to the... You know, due to the, I guess, the timing in terms of the pandemic. In addition to that, we will work to develop a couple of things. We're actually already working on this, and that is working to develop a hospitality function for our ambassadors, so an actual hospitality shift, as well as what we're calling a social outreach shift, where we'll have ambassadors that'll be focused more intently and intentionally on how we're connecting with our folks that are on our streets and assisting them in getting the help that they need. Oh, let's see. I'm going to glance through here. Let's see. One of the things that we would greatly appreciate working with the city of Spokane on, we'll be focusing on trying to work with our business customers in a back-to-work initiative, so how do we encourage the safe and healthy return as restrictions allow of our employees in back into downtown, because they are so integral to the vibrancy and the livelihood of our downtown, as we continue to focus on increasing and enhancing residential living as well. And let's see. Lastly, I would just say for 2022, we'll be working with your staff to communicate and help facilitate the pretty significant construction project, and that is the Riverside Avenue grind and overlay that'll be taking place roughly from Division Avenue all the way to Monroe, and in addition to that, working with Council President and our Parking Advisory Committee in establishing a kind of a, I would say, a 21st century parking program, let's just put it to that. And so, with that, I would just conclude and say again, thank you to the council, to the council president, for the opportunity to serve our customers. Thank you to our customers, and we would welcome any questions you might have.
Any questions for Mark Richard? I see, first, Councilmember Kinnear, and then Councilmember Wilkerson. Councilmember Kinnear.
Thanks. I just want to say, Mark, it's... We've had our differences, but it's been fun working with you, and I want to give a special shout-out to Sue Horton, because honestly, I would entrust my entire life savings with you, Sue. You're so thorough and good with numbers and with budgets, and it's been instructive listening to you and working with you, so I appreciate all that you do. And I also want to let everybody know that I've talked with Mark about really activating the Second and Third Avenues, because I think those are just little gems that are waiting to be discovered as we move forward. The best place to do anything right now is going to be Second and Third, or, and, go up. So, we have opportunity to go vertical downtown and perhaps utilize some of our, what is it, 30% of the surface parking lots, and activate those in something that is more vibrant than a surface parking lot. So, thank you.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Thank you, Councilwoman. We are seeing some great activity in terms of investment in that area. Super excited to work with all of you, to see that just grow exponentially, so thank you.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Thank you. I have to echo... Thank you. I have to echo the comments about Sue. I've only known her for a couple of years, and she's going to stay on and help us out, so much appreciated. Mark, I want to circle back around to, we've had some cursory conversations about the DSP partnering or trying to partner with childcare providers. We know that has been a significant barrier into many folks coming back to work in the downtown core, so just want to put that back on the radar. We know there's... We'll be funding for that, and not to let that fall off our plate, because I think that will be a critical component of how we reactivate the downtown.
Duly noted. Great reminder. I look forward to working with you on that. Thank you so much.
All right, and we actually don't have any requested public comment on your hearing. Thank you. It's been a pleasure working with you and your team this last year, and we have more work to do, so thanks for that. But with that, let's take a roll call vote on the ordinance adopting the assessment rules. Councilmember Mum.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council Presidents and I. Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
All right. That passes seven to zero. And Ms. Fister, if you could read the next hearing ordinance.
Hearing Item H3, Hearing on Final Reading, Ordinance C 36154, approving and confirming the 2022 assessments and assessment role for the East Bragg Park and Business Improvement Area, prepared under Ordinance C 35377 as codified and amended in Chapter 4.31(c) Spokane municipal code.
All right, I see Amanda Beck from City Planning. I see Laverne Beal from the East Bragg Business Association, and Mike Piccolo from City Legal. Not sure who is taking the lead here, or if anyone is.
This is Laverne Beal. Guess I should show my video.
Can you speak up just a little bit, Laverne? That'd be great.
Sure, I'll try. This is Laverne Beal, and Doug Trudeau is our president of ESBA, and he is going to be giving the talk, and I'm hoping Kara has the PowerPoint selection that was given.
Okay, I'll get, Doug is on the phone line, hopefully.
Okay.
If he can hit star three, Doug.
And the PowerPoint was actually supplied ahead of time, so hopefully we'll be able to be put up.
Okay.
I think...
They should share it. I don't know.
Oh, Amanda, do you have the PowerPoint? Okay.
Just the president begs, I, so, Laverne, if you would like to tell me the next slide, I can bet.
Say that again?
I can run the slides.
Yeah, yes, please.
If you just want to let me know.
Yes, Amanda, please run the slides, and let's see if...
And then, Lee, can you give me sharing, right, thank you.
And then, I believe Doug Trudeau is going to be giving the narrative on those.
Okay.
And thank you, council president and council members.
All right, Doug?
Hi.
Okay. All right, Mr. Trudeau, we've got the, I don't know if you can see our screen, but we've got the cover page for your presentation.
Yes, next slide, please.
Okay.
You gotta go. Laverne, I'm not on.
Okay, you can't see it, sorry, Doug. So, this is our revenue budget for 2022, and you can see that we have budgeted Zone 1, Zone 2, and Zone 3 for different roles in our business plan. We budgeted 90% of expected revenue because we were being very conservative and didn't want to overspend. So, Zone 1 is right along the Sprague corridor, Zone 2 is off on the west end, and Zone 3 is the industrial area. Thank you, Amanda, can you go to the next slide, please? Last year, in 2020, we only received 73% of our expected revenue, and we based our, based our 2021 budget on that 73%, and I'm glad and happy to report that right now we have, with concentrated effort, we now have 92% of our ratepayers funding our Business Improvement District. Next plot, slide, please. For 2022, this is the breakdown, or, this is 2021, and this is as of October 31st. You can see the budgeted amounts off to the left, and I know you can all read, and you can see our actual spending on the right. Some of the clean and green and the beautification and marketing is at 2% on here, but we've spent about $3,500 on marketing and branding in November and December, and so that amount is going to go up at 1231. So, again, we budgeted at 90%, and these are the budgeted amounts. Next slide, please. This is our anticipated revenue, and this is how we're going to allocate our funds. Administration is 25%, clean and green at 30%, district beautification is 25%, marketing and branding is at 12, and safety and security is at 9%. Next slide, please. We want to say thank you for this, this beautification project that the city allocated for the Sprague Union District. All of the money is being well-spent, and we are revitalized, we are renewed, and we are restored, because we are getting new stores and storefronts in our area, which is really, right now, we are only seeing three unoccupied buildings in the Sprague Union District, which is phenomenal. So we really want to say thank you, and we appreciate all of the efforts that the city has put forth in our area. And that is the presentation, thank you, council president and council members.
Thank you, Laverne, and it's just a great example of targeted investment by the city to that area, and the city invested millions of dollars, but the people who live there and work there and own businesses have responded in kind, it's been really exciting to watch, so thanks for all that work and effort. So we don't have any community comment, and we can go to a roll call vote. Oh, sorry, well, that was just Doug Trudeau, he was, yeah, yeah. Not just Doug, Doug's a big force there, so, thank you, Doug. But let's go to a vote, roll call, to approve the assessment ordinance for the upcoming year. Councilmember Mum.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council presidents and I, Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
And Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
All right, that passes seven to zero, and you just have to say to Mr. Richard, if all you get is one email critical of your operations, I'd say, and that's a pretty big victory, so, and none from the East Bragg, so, great job, everyone. We are, again, just staying a little bit out of order, but within the theme, we have an ordinance, 36151, updating the framework for the downtown bid, and we'll let Ms. Fister read that for us.
Ordinance C36-151, updating the framework for the downtown parking and business improvement area, amending Spokane Municipal Code Sections 4.31.020, 0.030, 0.040, 0.080, 0.090, and 1.140.
And this is, every five years or so, we update the contract to who's going to administer the bid, and we update it with the Downtown Spokane Partnership, and because of changes in the contract, we needed to update the ordinance, so this is mostly a housekeeping exercise, and I don't believe we have any public comment on it, is there any council commentary? All right, not seeing any, we'll have a roll call. Councilmember Mum.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council presidents and I, Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
All right, that passes seven to zero, and now we're going to go back to the top, special budget ordinance, Ms. Fister.
Ordinance C36-152, amending ordinance number C35-971, passed by the City Council, December 14, 2020, entitled, an ordinance adopting the annual budget of the city of Spokane for 2021, making appropriations to various funds of the city of Spokane government for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2021, and providing it shall take effect immediately upon passage and declared an emergency in appropriating funds in American Rescue Plan Fund from unappropriated reserves, $1,750,000 to uniform overtime, same amount, and Public Safety Personnel Fund from various accounts, $1,658,000 to uniform overtime, same amount. This action provides additional resources through the Public Safety Personnel Fund and the Revenue Replacement ARPA fund sources to ensure that the FIRE EMS fund has sufficient budget capacity for 2021.
All right, thank you, and if you're, if you were looking at the original ordinance that was filed, it was for 5 million, and it was from the contingency reserve, and city council staff have worked closely with the administration staff to substantially reduce that, and we're looking to take the money out of the public safety levy that the voters approved for FIRE, and also some American Rescue Plan Reserve funds that we have, so those were a few changes that you may not have caught, because we just did that at 3:30 this afternoon. We do have one member of the public who's requested to speak, and that's Nicolette Ockletree. Nicolette, if you want to hit star three. All right, Nicolette, welcome to City Council, you have up to three minutes.
Good evening. This ad hoc revision of our current budget that has been approved nearly a year ago should be a red flag going forward. Without recapitulating much of what has already been discussed by council in previous meetings, I'll keep my comments brief and stress that more oversight is needed with respect to both FIRE and police overtime. If they need more staff and resources, those need to be funded in advance so we don't spend twice as much when it becomes an urgency and an emergency. If it's something else, that needs to be investigated so that we can cut the, you know, we need to be able to figure out what's going on in advance, and it seems like this is always this pending and looming problem that happens throughout the year and especially at the end of the year. And when we're talking about making a budget, then we need to know that if all these things are going to be foreseen, costs, they need to be put into place, and if they're continuing to be these costs that keep coming up, keep coming up, keep coming up, then we've got to do something else to get ahead of that. And I think that, you know, that just needs to be a matter of investigation. Again, if it's more staff and resources, then they need to be funded for those staff and resources so that this doesn't happen. It costs the taxpayers twice, if not more, if we take care of it this way. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any council commentary? All right, we've, we've weighed in on this previously quite a bit, so nothing more for today, other than looking forward to different results and different reporting next year. We'll start with a roll call. Councilmember Mum.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council presidents and I, Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Next, we're at emergency ordinances.
Ordinance C36-155, improving the public works apprenticeship program to match recent updates to state law and increase apprenticeship utilization, updating the process of seeking exemptions specifying per craft apprenticeship utilization requirements, introducing a graduated penalty schedule and making associated technical corrections, amending section 7.06.720, 7.30, 7.60, 7.70, and 7.80, and enacting new sections 7.06.725 and 7.90 of the Spokane Municipal Code, and declaring an emergency.
All right, we've got several members of the public that would like to testify about this, and just by way of summary, our apprenticeship utilization ordinance that we passed several years ago for large public works projects by the city, and required contractors to use 15% of the hours with apprentices so that we could train up the next generation of construction trade workers, and we have a huge shortage of that, and the average age of workers was getting very high. And originally, that was somewhat controversial, but it turned out to work very well, and has been embraced and been very successful. And this year, this spring, we entered into a process to update it, and one of the problems that we wanted to solve was that the apprenticeship utilization was not across the board, it was a couple of crafts in particular were being utilized, but not a lot of others, even though we have state-certified training programs in Spokane. And so we proposed some language in the spring of this year, and held a big stakeholder meeting and got feedback on that. We then had smaller stakeholder meetings, then another large one, and we dialed back quite a bit of the provisions, but it still has a 15% utilization by craft, and it has penalties, but we did substitute a new version of the ordinance just today, based on feedback we got from the contractor community, so that if one of their subcontractors was not utilizing per craft, the general contractor wouldn't be penalized for that. So that's what's up, and members of the public, I'll call on you shortly, but just to let you know, if you're following this, make sure you're listening on the phone, if you're following by video, you'll be too late, because we have quite a bit of a lag. Address your comments to me rather than other individual council members, please don't disparage anyone, and you'll have up to three minutes. I don't give you a time signal, so at the end of three minutes, I'm just going to tell you to wrap it up, so hopefully you can keep your own time. I invite you to dial or push star three on your phone after I call your name, but it's also really important when you're done testifying that you hit star three again, so that it lowers your hand. So with that, I'm going to call Kimberly Mineke first to hit star three, after Kimberly is Pastor Andy Castroling, and then Cheryl Stewart. So, Kimberly, if they're, if you're there, hit star three, please. All right, Kimberly, welcome to Spokane City Council, you have up to three minutes.
Thank you so much for hearing my comments. I am Kimberly Mineke, the priest in charge at St. David's Episcopal Church on the north side of Spokane, which is a member organization of the Spokane Alliance. And as, so as part of the Spokane Alliance, I am calling in, offering some support for this ordinance, for this change, for this improvement of the apprenticeship program. By standardizing the 15% utilization for each craft, it then strengthens all of the programs and all of the raising up of new employees and new workers in the job market that we can have in the city, and helps to maintain our infrastructure as well, that we work so hard to build and then to keep. So if we have workers that are trained now, they'll be able to continue to do this work, so I'm very much in support of it, supporting the job training and jobs for future for all kinds of gifts and interests that young people and adults might have. So, thank you for considering this and for doing the updates that are needed, and I encourage all to vote in favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Kimberly, and if you want to hit star three and lower your hand, and Pastor Andy Castroling, if you'd like to hit star three and raise your hand. All right, welcome to City Council, Pastor Andy, you have up to three minutes.
Hi, David. Good evening, Council President begs. Andy Castroling, pastor and minister of United Church of Christ, and I am speaking with you tonight on behalf of all of the members of the Spokane Alliance. Many years ago, I joined you in chambers, and I stood up in support of the apprentice utilization ordinance that was passed all those years ago. Now I'm back to say, I really urge you to support this again, this 15% apprentice utilization across every craft, which is a very important shift in the language for this ordinance. This is a very sound financial decision in using our public dollars, or the public investment and the public good, so I want to encourage you to please respond positively to this effort to train up men and women in every craft, in all the trades, who serve our city and improve it, all of us. I also want to mention that the changes in the section on penalties are supported by the Spokane Alliance membership. We understand there have been very recent revisions, and we appreciate that this comes out of a healthy dialogue, and it's a reasonable compromise for the good of all of our workers and our contractors. So in creating hundreds of jobs and millions of dollars of income, I urge you to support this ordinance. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, and just requesting that you hit star three, and next is Cheryl Stewart. Cheryl, if you would hit star three and join us. Welcome to Spokane City Council, Cheryl, you have up to three minutes.
Thank you, and thanks for the opportunity to comment tonight and to participate in the process leading up to this. Additionally, I'd like to thank the council president for the changes made from the original draft to what you are seeing presented here today. My name is Cheryl Stewart, I'm the executive director of the Associated General Contractors. Our organization represents over 350 companies throughout eastern Washington, and more than 80% of the contractors that perform city work. I want to clearly state that we are not opposed to the intent of the apprenticeship ordinance, nor to the idea of making changes to improve it. In fact, I'm here tonight to ask that you simply give us more time to get it right. While I've heard that this process has been going on for six months... While I've heard that this process has been going on for six months, this only involved two stakeholder meetings during that time. And while we did provide feedback, we saw no changes or updates until this was added as an emergency ordinance to the council's agenda, at which time we had scrambled to get additional comments to everyone. We thought we had more time. First, I'd like to remind you that you have an ordinance that is working. According to the city's own reports, contractors are meeting and exceeding apprenticeship goals on almost every project. Very few fines have been issued, but those that have are not targeted to the companies they should be. With these changes specifically, our concerns lay with the per craft requirement and the escalating penalties. You've heard from contractors, subcontractors, city staff, and the administration that these are not simple changes, and they will present multiple challenges in administering projects moving forward. Good contractors will get penalized under this ordinance, even with the changes, for trying to do the right thing. It's not as simple as seeking a waiver or supplying good faith effort, and anyone that tells you that does not understand how the system works. A lack of workers at all levels, a shortage of registered apprenticeship programs, the inadequate reporting available from the city, and lack of administrative staff to manage this program are all factors that will lead to failure, and the general contractors are the ones that will bear the brunt of these failures. They will pay the penalties, again, even with the change to ensure some contractors can be fined. The overall goal still lies with the G C. The intent of the ordinance is to ensure a well-trained workforce for our industry, something the A G C spends thousands of hours on and invests hundreds of thousands of dollars in each year. We sponsor multiple apprenticeship programs, pre-apprenticeship programs, high school and workforce initiatives throughout the state. We understand the need to bring people to our industry better than anyone. We have had apprenticeship requirements in place for many years, yet we still face the same challenges because, once again, our challenge is not finding work for apprentices, it's finding people to be apprentices. Again, please give us more time to get this ordinance right. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. And if you'd hit star three. The next person of the public I'm going to call on is, I just have one name, Lysia. If you're there, Lysia, if you want to hit star three. I'm not seeing anyone raising their hand. The next two people are Chud Wendell, if you want to hit star three, and after Chud is going to be Jason Holmy, and then I'll try Lysia again, and then Matt Chapman. Hi, who do we have here?
Hi, good evening, Council President Beggs and council members. Thanks for the opportunity to share. I want to start with a quote from Dalai Lama regarding this and some other ordinances that are coming up. Quote goes as, "A lack of transparency results in distrust and a deep sense of insecurity." And as I read through the agenda, there are several items that I think that you're voting on tonight that go against transparency. And ultimately, this, when this happens, there's a distrust that builds by the citizens towards our council. I'm not familiar with the changes that sound like just happened today, so I might be speaking out of turn here a bit. At this point, though, I would echo what Cheryl Stewart said, and that would come down to the timing of this. I think that there needs to be more time to explore. It's from my understanding that there are no other municipalities in the state of Washington that have a strict program like this, and from my understanding, the Department of Transportation does not even have this. So why is the council feeling like we need to change something that is working? By allowing exemptions and specifying per craft apprenticeships utilization at a deeper level and introducing penalties, this is going to force the city to pay more. I feel the competition would be eliminated while allowing council to pick and choose the vendors and contractors. This ultimately will cost the citizens of Spokane more. I encourage you this evening to either vote against it or delay the vote so we can have more of a conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Chud. If you want to hit star three to lower your hand. Next up is Jason Holmy. If you want to hit star three, Jason. All right. Welcome to City Council, Jason. You have up to three minutes.
Thank you. This is Jason Holmy. I'm the president of Holmy Construction, and we've done about $200 million worth of projects for the city of Spokane in the last 12 years or so. Many of those have been smaller projects, probably average size of a couple million dollars. And we've embraced wholeheartedly the apprenticeship program that the city council has implemented back in 2017. Our company is really, when that came in, it looked to be pretty burdensome for the construction community, but we thought that if we really leaned into it, that we could meet the requirements and we could help obtain the objective of helping new apprentices come into the industry. What I'm concerned about with the new ordinance and the per craft basis of it is, it appears to be pitting one union against another union or one craft against another craft when the construction projects will become very fragmented. And, for example, if you're an ironworker, you might go up on a job for three hours in a month because that's all the ironwork that's required on that project in a month. So it becomes very fragmented in nature. I was just sharing this ordinance and the concept of this ordinance with one of our employees who's a Swedish immigrant, who was in the construction unions there in Sweden. He said, "This is very strange. This is only in America that you see construction being so fragmented where you have such a limited scope that a construction worker can do." And it really makes for a very inconsistent work environment for the construction workers. So what I'm concerned about with this ordinance is that the advantage now is going to go to out-of-town contractors that come into town for a one-and-done project, such as the Oregon Contractor that did the $160 million G C C M project down at the Riverside Wastewater Treatment Plant, where they're not held to the daily grind of trying to meet these requirements and the penalties that if they don't, they can swoop in, take a job, and leave, and maybe 10 years later, they may come back, may not come back for another big contract. So we really think that the workers doing the bread and butter improvements in the city, the smaller contracts where there's not a lot of per craft work on one job, they're the ones that are going to be really restricted and discriminated against, really, by this ordinance. So I would encourage the council members to, at a minimum, delay the vote and really think about the new workers coming into the construction field, how they're going to be disincentivized to even look at construction as a place to make a living when it's so fragmented and it's hard to go on a job and just stay working there for a couple of months. You move in and move out because you're only limited to a specific craft. So I just want to speak in behalf of the construction workers that are really trying to make a consistent living, and we are not anti-union. I don't think this is a union, non-union issue.
Thank you, Jason.
I think it's one craft versus another.
You're at your three minutes, but thank you so much for sharing in the work you've done for the city.
Yeah.
Appreciate that. I'm going to, another shout out to, again, I think it might be pronounced Lysia, if you're there, if you want to hit star three. All right. Yes, I think we have you here. I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing your name right, so welcome to Spokane City Council, and go ahead and introduce yourself. You have up to three minutes.
Good evening, council members. My name is Louis Lysia. I'm a former apprentice from a Washington State registered apprenticeship program, and I'm currently the coordinator for the Labor's Local 238. And tonight, I'm standing with the Spokane Alliance in favor of the apprenticeship utilization ordinance. Here in Spokane, we have done amazing jobs, creating careers for new talent coming from the local high schools and from under percent of individuals in our community, such as females, minorities, and formerly incarcerated individuals. I have the privilege of working with people coming into the program and see how an apprenticeship and a learning a trade changes people's lives. Here in Spokane, we have several pre-apprenticeships programs that go directly into a pathway into apprenticeship program in the state of Washington, and this increases the opportunity, you know, for all the people and their backgrounds. These changes from the apprenticeship utilization ordinance will increase the number of opportunities that we can offer them. In closing, I'd like to state that I am in favor of the amendments that clarify the fine structure. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next person and last person is Matt Chapman, if you want to hit star three, and anyone else who was on before, they might hit. I think, Chud, you might still have your hand up, star three. All right. Matt, welcome to Spokane City Council. You have up to three minutes.
Thank you, council. Thank you, Council President Beggs. My name is Matt Chapman. I'm with the ironworkers. I'm also co-chair of the Spokane Alliance Jobs Team. Tonight, I'm speaking to the importance of strengthening this apprenticeship utilization ordinance with the amendments that were made today. As you may know, we at the Spokane Alliance worked with our city partners to pass this apprenticeship ordinance back in 2014. Since it was created, it has created many opportunities, and millions of dollars have gone into training programs for apprentices in the Spokane area to train those apprentices. But over time, we've seen some gaps in the ordinance, and tonight, we're asking you to strengthen it so that we can create a more diverse, skilled workforce for the work that is on the horizon with the infrastructure funding package. At the Spokane Alliance, we believe these public dollars should be used for public investment, for public benefit. This is not a union, non-union issue. This is not a subcontractor, general contractor issue. This is a worker issue. This is a training issue of training apprentices for the future work that we need and to handle the influx of work when it arises. There's two changes, the per craft language. This will ensure that we have a diverse apprenticeship representation on all jobs so these apprentices can complete their apprenticeship, which range from three to five years, and have the available hours on these projects to complete their on-the-job training. It also increases the fines for repeat violations. The original fine is left alone. We support the amendments introduced by Council President Beggs today. We have had a healthy dialogue. We have listened. We've had opportunities for all parties interested to participate. We do support the fines for the subs and the general contractors not being held liable for that. This is about building a workforce for the future. With more money coming to build our infrastructure, we need more skilled, trained people. Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to the end of public testimony, and I was just going to speak briefly before I invite any other council members to speak. And that is just to, again, reiterate that we've been in the stakeholder process for six months. We've had dozens and dozens of stakeholders at our meetings, and every issue that was brought up, we addressed in changes to the language. And two things of importance. One, this per craft requirement of 15% doesn't kick in unless there's 160 hours of work on a particular project or on a particular contract by subcontractor. So it's not the problem of just a few hours, you have to find someone. The second thing that's, I think, really important from what I heard from contractors is if there is nobody available at any of the apprenticeship training certified places, they can easily get a waiver from the administration. And the third thing is that, again, on the per craft, the penalties don't accrue to the general contractor. And we also took out a huge section on responsible bidders because the contractor community requested that we sit down and workshop that piece in the future so that we can make sure the right incentives and disincentives are in there regarding whether people cooperate or don't cooperate with the problem. So we've done a lot of work on it. It'd be great to make sure that utilization was across all trades so that all the people are getting trained, and I'm strongly in supportive of it. But I'll open it up to any other council members. All right. Councilmember Stratton.
I just want to thank you for that clarification because I was worried about that section of if a contractor couldn't find the appropriate apprenticeships or apprentices to be on the job, that there was a process for them to, you know, file that so they're not having to pay a price for that. So I appreciate that. Thanks.
Any other comments? All right. We'll go to a vote, but one of the things I do want to say is I really appreciated everybody that weighed in. Like I said, we had dozens of stakeholders at our meetings. We had to do it by Zoom. Everyone was focused and to the point and collaborative, and I believe everyone, at this point, is looking for the same goals, and we're just continuing to fine tune things. So thanks for that, and we'll go to the roll call. Councilmember Mum.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council Presidents and I. Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
All right. That passes six to one. That brings us to resolutions and final reading ordinances.
Resolution 2021-99, adopting the city of Spokane's legislative agenda for the upcoming 2022 state legislative session.
All right. Thank you. And again, we do this every year about this time, trying to give our lobbyists some direction of what to pursue in the state legislative session coming at the start of the year. Again, this afternoon, we made a few changes to clarify things based on feedback that we got. I don't know that it really changed much of substance, but the three areas were, one, on our agenda for capital request is a diversion facility for municipal court. So basically, a freestanding structure where people could get drug treatment and housing while they're going through the criminal charging process that municipal court could use. They've requested that they have that rather than just turning people back into the community. So that was one thing. Secondly, there is an intake center for homeless services requested, and the language we changed was to make it clear that it doesn't have to be in downtown. It's just an intake center so that we could move people from out of the viaducts and into shelters outside of downtown. And then the third was our criminal justice refinements to allow the state to fund our local therapeutic courts, like drug courts. So it was not changing the sentences for property crimes, whether felony or misdemeanor. It was just changing how the funding gets locally so that when the state saves money because we're doing drug court or some other therapeutic court, they share some of that money with us to fund those kind of programs. But we have several people who, well, not several, three people who would like to testify on our legislative agenda, and those are going to be Don Brockett, Andrew Rolles, and Chud Wendell. And we'll start with Mr. Brockett, who's served our community well for many, many years as the elected prosecutor. Mr. Brockett, if you want to hit star three. All right. Welcome to Spokane City Council. You have up to three minutes.
Thank you very much, members of council. I wanted to address this because it was brought to my attention and apparently several other people at the last minute. And from what you said, Mr. Beggs, it looks like maybe what you put out as what was being considered is different because what I read is that it has to do with diversion services in lieu of incarceration for felony property crimes adjudicated by Spokane and misdemeanor drug crimes adjudicated by the city of Spokane. What I was concerned about listening to other people who have testified this evening, Cheryl Stewart, for example, from A G C, I was on their committees for many, many years in crime prevention, Mark Richards from the Downtown Partnership, which plays into this in a large way because, as we all know, there are more homes, so to speak, being built downtown. So if the city council is taking the position that they do not think felony property crimes should be prosecuted, because I don't see anything in the information provided by the city that indicated to what people would be diverted. If that means they're diverted out of the system totally and the policemen would simply give them a pamphlet and send them on their way as opposed to sending them to the criminal justice prosecution system through the prosecutor's office when it's a felony, I sincerely wonder whether or not that wouldn't be a crime in and of itself, and I'm not sure the city would want to do that. The other question is, I've heard a lot of people talk about stakeholder meetings, and I haven't heard anything or seen anything as far as the material presented that would indicate that there have been any stakeholders meeting to determine whether or not the city should take this kind of should take this kind of a position. As I recall, and of course, I did leave prosecution many, many years ago at the end of 1894, but at that time, approximately 80% of the people in prison were there because of drugs. I don't know that that really has gone down because we've actually encouraged people to use more drugs by making it a misdemeanor and not a crime at all. So I just wonder, and I guess would respectfully urge that the council consider deferring this in order to give all of us a position to take a look at what's being proposed. The fear I have is that once the city council takes a position on that, then the legislature can point to it and say, look, the city council of the city of Spokane thinks this is a good idea. And I wonder whether or not the citizens do. I know you want to represent the citizens in all efforts. So again, I think because of all of this, I would urge you to defer it. And let's see what kinds of things can back up the claim, for example, as I read this, that it will improve public safety, reduce recidivism, and lower criminal justice costs. Of course, it lowers criminal justice costs, but that's not really a very good answer to the businessman who's just had his place spoken into and suffers the cost of vertaire or to the homeowner. And I do have a specific interest in that because I was burglarized once and can tell you that it is true, as people say, that it's as serious as the feeling that somebody has from having their place.
Mr. Brockett? You're over your three minutes.
Yes, sir.
You're over your three minutes.
Okay, thank you.
So thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Yep. And next, Andrew Rawls. If you want to hit star three, Andrew. All right, welcome to city council, Andrew. You have up to three minutes.
Thank you, council president and members of council. I'm Andrew Rawls with the Downtown Spokane Partnership. We do appreciate the edits you're considering in the legislative agenda. And we, of course, also recognize that it represents your recommendations to our legislators for the coming session. Focusing my comments on the proposal for the intake and referral center, we know, of course, that you've removed the reference to it being in downtown. We understand that there are benefits to co-locating services for the homeless and those who are suffering from addiction and mental illness. However, over the past couple of decades, the concentration of services has overshot the mark to the point where it's harming business. And as importantly, it's harming the people that need to help these services provide. This is because it essentially has set up a market for drug dealers and other criminals to prey on the vulnerable who are seeking services in order to turn their lives around. In our email on Friday of last week, we noted that South Downtown already has well over 20 different service providers for the homeless, the mentally ill, and the addicted, plus hundreds of units of low and no barrier housing. We do support services for the homeless and building the transportation systems needed to make a distributed service model feasible. But the community must undertake the effort to correct the error of super-concentrating those services in South Downtown over the past decade or two. And they must be located outside of downtown. With that, I thank you for the time.
Thank you. Chud Wendell, if you want to hit star three.
His hand was still up, so now it's gone.
All right. Chud, maybe hit star three again, if you're still there. All right. Welcome back to city council. Chud, you have up to three minutes.
All right. Sorry about that. I apologize. So once again, it's Chud Wendell. I am executive director of the settlement. Was, appreciate the opportunity to speak on this item as well. There's actually two pieces under the legislative agenda I want to speak on. One's the smart justice. As the executive director of a nonprofit that has over 20 commercial properties in the city of Spokane, we've seen since the start of 2020, a drastic increase in property crimes, including graffiti, broken storefronts, shoplifting. I mean, the list goes on and on. And this is one that I just feel like we need to have more of a conversation from the business community. And I'd go along with Mr. Brockett in deferring this and pull a stakeholder group together that we can work on this. I did see the language change by adding pilot in front of the smart justice program, but I don't think that is, I think that's just an opportunity to, just to push this thing along. I feel like when we look at the community court system, and I've been looking at it closer and closer, it's broken right now. And it was broken before COVID. We need to adjust that before we start pushing. This isn't an initiative or a focus point. Just like the illegal drug decriminalization law that went through, that was supposed to be a pilot program, but the legislators did not even identify metrics of success, what that looks like or what failure looks like. So how can it be a pilot program if you can't determine whether it's working or not? So this would be another piece, the smart justice. Is there metrics identified at this point? And if not, we need to delay or defer this piece and discuss it further. The other one's the Spokane Intake and Referral Center. I get that you changed the location or just generalized it. But what we need to look at is getting beds so that we can get to a point where we can enforce sit and lie. And I don't believe, from what I see, that this is going to address anything about sit and lie. And so those are, you know, these are some big thing, and I would encourage you to take a closer look at this one, too, before putting it on the legislative agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead and hit star three, lower your hand. And before I entertain some council commentary, I just wanted to just provide a little more information, especially to Mr. Brockett. So first of all, well, to anyone, this program of having the state fund our therapeutic courts has been on our agenda for about three years. So this is nothing new. We've done it before. And it's not a diversion program. People plead guilt, they get charged, they get arrested, they get charged, they plead guilty. But drug court has been a very successful court for us in this community. And the reoffense rate is well under 20%, whereas the reoffense rate for people who don't go to drug court and go straight to prison is well over 60%. So that's how it reduces crime, reduces costs. So it's essentially funding felony therapeutic courts with state money. It's not changing anything else in the sentencing or anything like that. So just wanted to reassure people that. And then also, to Mr. Wendell's point on the intake center, it's exactly your goal, which is to be able to enforce sit and lie and the no camping ordinances by having spaces for people available so that Boise v. Martin was not an impediment to that. So just wanted to share those, in case people hadn't read it or didn't understand that. But other council members on our legislative agenda, which includes many, many topics, I don't know if there's any comments that people have. I'll go with Councilmember Cathcart and then Councilmember Mumm.
Yeah, thank you. I'll start. I, so there's a couple items on the capital budget agenda that, of course, I support and I had put forward, hoping to use ARPA funds for, and that's related to both Mini Haha Park as well as the Hilliard Library. And those are really, really important and deserve to be funded and hopefully will be, whether through the state or through ARPA. But I can't support the overall legislative agenda. And there's a couple of reasons, and I'll point those out. So first of all, with regards to that smart justice piece, and I know there's been a lot of discussion around this just simply being a funding mechanism and nothing more, but the way it's written, and maybe it's just not written correctly, it says that it would enable us to use a diversion service. It doesn't say accept, you know, payments or add additional funding. It talks about an accelerated rehabilitation, community safety, diversion services. So this is like a whole new program, a whole new approach. We've not really had a broader conversation around this, or I've not been a part of it. And I think it's really important that we have that community discussion around, should the focus be, you know, this kind of alternative method for adjudicating property crimes? And what does that look like? And what's the impact going to be on public safety and the issues that were continuing and frankly, I think are rising in our community right now? So I think that's really important. We need to have more conversations around that. And then also with regard to the intake center, I, there was a comment by somebody made that, you know, this isn't going to create more beds, it's simply going to, you know, be another space. And I would, I expect that while maybe we will get funding to build this center or to purchase a building for this center, that it will end up being on us to operate it. And we already know how expensive, you know, these facilities are to operate. Shelters alone are extremely costly. Look at what Cannon is costing us or what the proposed new shelter would potentially cost us in operating costs. And to me, if we're going to go to the legislature and ask them for funding, why not fund the $4.7 million shelter that we don't have funding for at present as a way, as the item that we would be seeking? And then that way, it would be a dual purpose. It'd be creating beds to help those, not just merely a building without beds, but it would also be giving us the ability to better enforce the Boise decision or with regards to the Boise decision so that we can enforce our local code. So that's, I'll leave it at that for now. There's a few other comments I can make about a couple other items, but that's probably the biggest piece. And then the last thing I'll just leave with is my other concern, which is just simply the way we structured our legislative agenda process, where we approve the tier one and then theoretically a tier two, although I know we have come to counsel on those in the past, but tier two and tier three would not necessarily require our input. And so since these are so broad, I fear there's a lot of bills that perhaps I would not be supportive of that could get tacked on to our tier two and tier three without necessarily the robust council input that they deserve. So I'll leave it at that for now.
Thank you. Councilmember Mumm.
I'm just so proud of our legislative process. I think back to where it was eight years ago when Spokane was just really not showing up. And where we are now is light years ahead. Just excited to bring this forward. We're going to be meeting with our lawmakers this week, both with the GSI group and then, of course, inviting them to have our own special roundtable where we get to interface with our lawmakers one-on-one as we send them off to Olympia, potentially supporting some things that they want and member requests that improve our community, as well as legislation that improves the lives of people in Spokane. We hear feedback over and over from our lawmakers of how great this process works, how they like it, how it's easy, how it's simple. And I invite all council members in the future to be involved in this legislative process. Send your LA's to the meetings if you can't go. I know we're limited to three people, you know, without causing quite a ruckus with a big public meeting. So just the feedback that we get on all levels, from the federal level, the state level, and the local level, we are headed in the right direction in this process. And especially from our lawmakers, they really appreciate our efficiency and how we present it because it's not like we're just throwing spaghetti on the wall. As you know, hundreds, if not thousands, of bills are introduced throughout the year. So I always can improve the process in the future, but I'm very proud to support this as part of the legislative team.
Councilmember Burke and then Councilmember Kinnear.
Thank you. Yeah, I just, I do want to echo sentiments of Councilmember Mumm's comments. When I started on the legislative team, back when I started on council, we did not have a very big presence in Olympia. And I knew that previously because I also had been working for Senator Billick in the legislature. And so we really have come very far, even just in my four years of being on council. And so I'm really proud of the work we've done and our lobbyists and the process that we've set up. I'm also, you know, I just, I've had a really great time being on this committee with Councilmember Mumm and Council President Beggs. And I've learned a lot about different things that I never really thought we could do at the state level, especially just Council President, you've really, you drove a lot of different initiatives forward for our criminal justice system. And I think it really inevitably is going to help so much in the long term of our city. And so I'm just really proud of the work that we've done. And I've heard a few times from commenters tonight about how we should be asking for money for shelters and things like that. And we do have opportunities to do that, but when our administration doesn't apply for those grants and we leave money on the table, that's, that doesn't look good for our city. So, you know, for all those people who called in and commented about that, I feel, you know, I would definitely direct those to the administration because to be the ones applying for those grant dollars that Commerce has been trying to put out to us. And there's tons of unique ways to get dollars around that. But these proposals are actually more upstream. They're looking to try to get people to not get into homelessness, right? We're going upstream. And I'm just really proud of the work that we've done here in Spokane. And I really think a lot of the pilots and initiatives and different proposals that we've passed in these past four years, even just these past four years, will really night and day make a difference in our constituents' lives and inevitably our downtown core and the rest of our city. So I'm definitely going to be supporting this and thank you all for all the work that you've done.
Thank you, Councilmember Burke, for all of your work on this. And Councilmember Mumm, Councilmember Kinnear?
And not to be repetitive, but I'm also going to echo both of you. And Councilmember Burke, you know, you did hit it on the head and you said, we've missed some opportunities. The administration has missed some opportunities, not applying for those Commerce dollars when we could have and perhaps had gotten those beds. And I want to respond directly to the smart justice piece that Council President was referring to. And we're simply asking the state to take over the funding so that we are not going it alone. And I think that no matter how many times he's said it, it's not getting, it's not registering with the people who are listening. So yes, it's a pilot. It has been working. Community court works. And again, it has to be something that we're doing upstream. If we're constantly putting Band-Aids on the problems around helpless individuals, we're not going to get anywhere. We're just going to, we cannot build our way out of this. So we do need to address this upstream. And I also want to give a shout out to Eric Polson, who is the person who is coordinating this for us and reaches out to us, asks us what we want, is deferential, and makes really good suggestions so that we're being as professional as we can dealing with our legislators, both at the state level and at the federal level. And Councilmember Mumm, we did get our do not feed the wildlife piece on our second tier. So we'll see how that goes.
Thank you, Councilmember Kinnear. Councilmember Wilkerson?
Thank you. I support this. I am looking at the transportation piece and whether it's on our first tier or our second tier, we really didn't get the opportunity to have a good, robust discussion about the north-south corridor and how it intersects with the east-central neighborhood. There were some changes that came down from Washdaw that was going to effectively cut that community off. So I look forward to that conversation with our lobbyists and with other council members going forward to see what role we could play in the inequity of the access to the east-central neighborhood.
Thank you. Any other commentary on the resolution to adopt the 2022 state legislative agenda? All right, seeing and hearing none, we'll have a roll call. Councilmember Mumm.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear?
Aye.
Council President's an aye. Councilmember Burke?
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart?
Nay.
Councilmember Wilkerson?
Aye.
All right, that passes six to one. That's the end of our resolutions and final reading ordinances. Now we have two first reading ordinances. And if you would like to read both of them, then I'll call out public comment.
Ordinance C 36156, streamlining the organization of the Spokane Police Department, repealing sections 3.01A, 3.75, 3.85, 3.90, and 400 of the Spokane Municipal Code and setting an effective date. And ordinance C 36160 relating to crimes involving drug possession enacting new sections 10.15.225 and 10.15.230 of the Spokane Municipal Code. Further action is deferred on the first reading ordinances.
All right. And we have three people to discuss. The first one, which is going to be Chud Wendell and Bill Hisslepp and Nicolat Ockletree. And then- And then on the second one, Tom Brockett. And so on the first one, the Spokane Police Department reorganization, I did just want to clarify because there seemed to be some information out there that didn't match with either the intent or the language of the ordinance. So under the city charter or ordinances that we have, each department at the city can only have two exempt employees and the rest of them are essentially civil service unless they're seasonal or project employees. And the civil service is competitive based on merit and then they also get for cause protection. So many years ago, a previous administration tried to get around the two exempt rule by dividing the fire department, the police department into multiple sub-departments and so that they were getting 10 exempts for each. And the fire union took the city to court and won. And so the sub-departments for the fire department were repealed and they have the two exempts. And the police department, the city never got around to dealing with that. So this ordinance simply consolidates those sub-departments so that the police department has two exempts like all other departments. We wanted to take special care to make sure that anybody in those current positions, though there's not many of them in them, would have their job protected and would not be at any risk and has nothing to do with them. It's just reorganizing the police department. And we have language in, we already had language, but we have even more pointed language protecting those jobs as exempts if they choose to do that in this. So it's not about anyone losing their jobs. But that said, reasonable minds can differ about whether or not the police department should have two exempts or 10 exempts. And I'll invite Chud Wendell, if you want to hit star three. Chud, welcome back to City Council. You have up to three minutes.
Thanks, Council President Beggs. After your clarification, I am good. I appreciate you clarifying and walking us through that. So I don't have anything else to say. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. If you want to hit star three, lower your hand. And then Bill Hisslepp, if you want to hit star three. Bill, welcome to Spokane City Council. You have up to three minutes.
Thank you, councilmembers. I appreciate the opportunity to visit with you this evening. I'm Bill Hisslepp, I'm the former U.S. Attorney for here in Eastern Washington and also served as the Vice Chair of the city's Use of Force Commission. I understand that you've received innumerable emails on this issue from a wide variety of interests, including a letter from the Spokane Police Foundation, which I serve on. I want to augment and amplify some of those issues. Council President Beggs, you have raised this issue about the charter that I understand was raised at the briefing session this afternoon. Unfortunately, this ordinance is being presented on an emergency basis. There is no crisis that justifies an emergency and there isn't really any reason why it has to be done this year. It's my understanding that the council has not consulted with the mayor on this, has not sought, I have not seen a legal opinion from the city attorney that there's a violation of the charter occurring here, albeit there may have been a lawsuit with the fire department involving its contract. That is not determinative of the situation with the police department and that has not occurred there. And this is not being requested by the police department or by the police guild. Rather, I understand it's being raised for the first time solely by Council President Beggs without the consultation of the police department, without the consultation of the chief of police, and in fact, without the consultation until just the last day or so of the employees who were affected. That is not the way to run a railroad. Council President Beggs, you talked earlier about the apprenticeship ordinance and you applauded the process that would occur there where there were six months of discussions, multiple meetings and so on and so forth that brought the council to the, to the ordinance that you ultimately adopted here tonight. Unfortunately, that has not occurred here with this and I'm suggesting that time can be provided and you don't have to do this this year. You can raise this in January and start those discussions if you truly feel that there is a violation of the charter and if the city attorney comes forward with a legal opinion and says that there's a violation of the charter. Without that, I believe that some of your contentions ring rather hollow. And in fact, by eliminating these positions.
Mr. Hisslepp, you're over your three minutes.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you for participating this evening. Next, Nicolette Ockletree, if you want to hit star three. Welcome back to City Council, Nicolette. You have up to three minutes.
Good evening and thank you. I may have further comments on the final reading ordinance next week, but I did want to take this time to specifically focus on best practices when repealing sections of the Spokane Municipal Code. Providing a link to the original, albeit repealed code allows for a seamless transparency and greater public access. It also reduces the burden on the clerk's office in the event that a citizen wishes to have access to a copy of the repealed code and choose to file a public records request to obtain it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll invite council commentary in just a moment, but I just wanted to correct a couple of things. First of all, this ordinance is not an emergency ordinance. So you can look at it. There's no emergency language in it. Secondly, we do ordinances changing departmental structure on the last city council meeting of the year when we do budget, and that's what this is scheduled for. Third, I did broach this subject with the administration this summer. We put it in writing in October and we were told by the administration that they would carefully consider it. We didn't hear anything back. We put it, sent copies of it. We didn't hear anything back on that. When we put it on committee, we did hear something back and then have consulted with them and made it clear that we're not trying to interfere with any employees and we requested language from the administration to make sure that any employees were protected. We didn't get that language, but council has supplied it, just to be clear. So I just wanted to clarify that. But other council commentary, Councilmember Kinnear.
And one thing to add to your description, it has nothing to do with the charter we're talking about, our SMC, Spokane Municipal Code. So we're trying to true that up with, as we do at the end of the year with the budget. And are we supposed to comment on this now or would you rather us do this next week when we actually vote on it?
You're right. I forgot that it's only the first reading of the ordinance, so thanks for that reminder. Okay, that's all there is on that ordinance. And then Mr. Brockett requested to comment on the drug possession ordinance. And I just want to clarify for people that this is proposed by the police department and city legal to adapt to the legislature's changes on drug possession, essentially making drug possession a misdemeanor instead of a felony. And so now it's city business instead of county business. But Mr. Brockett, if you are there, if you want to hit star three. It looked, he did comment sort of before on it. Doesn't look like he's there. So I think we're done with that. And that brings us to the end of the legislative agenda, but we do have open forum and we have one person signed up, Nicolette Ockletree. If you want to hit star three, Nicolette.
What about the budget?
Oh, sorry. A whole bunch of people are waiting to talk about the budget hearing. Sorry about that. So want to go ahead and read the heading for the budget hearing?
H1, Continued Hearing on Proposed 2022 Budget, Continued from November 29, 2021 Agenda.
All right. Sorry if I got your hopes up, councilmembers, but we have four people who have, no, more than four people. Seven people have signed up to comment on the budget. And I'll just read the first three names so you can get ready. So Ryan Louis, Dean Lynch and Jack Archer are the first three. So Ryan, if you want to hit star three. Not seeing Ryan. How about Dean Lynch, if you want to hit star three? All right, Dean, former city council member for Spokane, welcome back to City Council. You have up to three minutes.
Good evening, Council President Beggs and the rest of members of the council. As usual, a nice long meeting tonight. Thank you for sitting through and taking the public testimony here towards the end. It's my privilege to speak to you tonight about the Proposed Office of Civil Rights Equity and Inclusion. And I know some of you are aware, but I wanted to give a little bit of history of my awareness of the city's Human Rights Commission. And it dates back to 1996 or 1997, when Stonewall News Spokane publisher John Dean wrote six points that he sent to Mayor Jack Garrity about needs of the LGBT community in Spokane. And at that time, Mayor Garrity passed that information on to the Human Rights Commission and specifically Vince Lemus, who was the Equal Employment and Contract Compliance Officer for the city of Spokane. In that capacity, he supported the Human Rights Commission. Between 1997 and 1998, the Human Rights Commission, with extensive public community input, developed the Spokane Human Rights Ordinance. It was passed in 1998 and then there was a political campaign to have it repealed that was upheld by the voters of Spokane, clearly demonstrating that the Human Rights Commission had listened to the community and had developed an ordinance that was wanted by the community. So thank you for the work that was done. In 2004, Vince Lemus lost his job as a result of budgetary issues. As you know, the Human Rights Commission is made up strictly of volunteers. Their effectiveness has ebbed and flowed depending upon city support as well as the makeup of the commission, which of course is appointed by the mayor. But during the last 20 years, there are a number of things that the Human Rights Commission has been involved with. One was the Spokane Municipal Code Title 18, the Human Rights Chapter. 1801, Law Against Discrimination, remember, had its foundation back in 1996, 97, 98. So thank you for all the work the Human Rights Commission has done. Thank you to the work that the Spokane City Council has done over these years. I would like to acknowledge and thank the city council that you began work on an office of civil rights, and I'm going to call it equity and inclusion, over four years ago. You put it in the budget. A position was created and the position was never filled. That's very unfortunate. But now we're at a point in time where the opportunity is very ripe. It is time for, to have a complete office of civil rights and I encourage you to fully budget it as much as you possibly can. I know that some discussion of three, Des Moines, Iowa, has an office of six, very similar sized city.
Dean.
But I thank you for all the work you've done and encourage you to move forward.
Thank you so much. So great to have you back. Next up is going to be Jack Archer, if you want to hit star three, and then Puyan Lam and then Terry Anderson. Jack, if you want to hit star three. Jack, welcome to City Council. You have up to three minutes.
Thank you very much. Firstly, I, I want to thank City Council for the move that it's taken to really take community calls for an office of civil rights equity and inclusion seriously. I'm glad that we've hired Joel Haynes, our first human rights coordinator this year, and that the city council supports funding three positions in the 2022 budget. And while this is a great first step, I'd really love to encourage council to please commit to creating and fully funding a multi-faceted office of civil rights equity and inclusion in the 2022 budget with the six positions that were recommended in the community proposal that was heard, I believe, one week ago. I personally, I love Spokane in no small part because it's given me the opportunity, given me so much opportunity and a sense of home. But like every American city, it struggles to live up to its professed ideals. And I wanted to share two stories that illustrate the need for an office. The first is not my story, it's a story of a friend I'll call Tyler. Tyler, like me, is a trans masculine individual, is a trans man unlike me. And I remember talking to him and about how he had been harassed at his service institution job here in Spokane on a regular basis and that when he reached out to his employer and said, look, I'm facing this harassment from, you know, people, believe other employees, his employer told him, you are lucky that you have a job. A lot of people around here wouldn't hire someone like you, referring to my friend's And in that moment, he didn't know where to turn. And he reached out to me, as many of my friends had at that time, because they knew that I, you know, cared about, you know, public issues and politics and thought, hey, maybe my friend Jack might know something. And I wasn't fully sure where to turn. I eventually ended up directing them to various resources that I had at that particular time available, some of them at the state level, but they were inadequate and there wasn't anything obvious in the city for him. The next story I'm going to tell is mine. I had, I've had a few interesting experiences here in Spokane due to my identity as a black person and as a trans masculine person, but one that sticks out for the purposes of this comment was the time that I went to urgent care because I believed I had, I think, some kind of infection or something like that. This was prior, before the COVID days. And because I am trans masculine and elements of my legal identity have changed, so I have changed my name, I have changed markers on identification, but the hospital system has all of my names, all of my gender markers, basically the entire history of my transition can be found in my medical records, such that when I presented my ID to the person at the front desk in order to check in, she looked at me and said, well, what's your real name? To which I said, my name is the name on my ID. And she said, well, that's not in your record, that's not your real name. She was legally wrong, but she was also incredibly rude. And that experience shook me in a moment when I was seeking care and just simply needed to get looked at and not have my identity interrogated by someone who could have simply acknowledged she was there.
Yep. You're at the end of your time, Jack. But thank you.
I'm at the end of my time? All right. Well, thank you for taking this issue seriously.
All right. Thanks for participating tonight. And next, Puyan Lam. Dr. Lam, if you're there, hit star three. All right, welcome to Spokane City Council. You have up to three minutes.
Good evening, Council President Beggs and the other council members. I am speaking tonight to urge the council members to support the community proposal presented to the council last week and to fully fund the six positions for the Office of Civil Rights Equity and Inclusion in the 2022 city budget. I was fortunate that in my early years in Spokane, a friend of mine organized breakfast at her house that brought together a small group of women of color regularly. I was grateful for the support from the group and tried to offer the same to others after they moved to Spokane. But I soon realized our individual efforts are not enough to combat the hostile environment people of color face in the larger community and to dismantle the systematic inequities deeply embedded in our institutions in Spokane. Over the years, I saw friends and colleagues leaving the city because they didn't think they and their families could thrive in Spokane. As I prepared this statement, I thought of the faces of wonderful, talented people we have. we had lost over my 20 years living in Spokane. In between those more public hateful incidents that made the news, there are also the everyday racism and other forms of discrimination in different aspects of our lives, from employment to housing and to access to different city services. These everyday incidents don't make the news, but they do threaten our livelihood and well-being. What breaks my heart when I hear these experiences from friends and students is the hurt and shame they feel. And these acts of discrimination don't affect only the individuals who are targeted. The Spokane community bears the collective cost when we are unable to recruit students to local universities or to retain talented employees with the skills and expertise we critically need here, or when companies decide not to move to Spokane because of this not-so-welcoming environment. I commend the city for hiring Gerald Haines as the first civil rights coordinator and the city council for creating the Equity Subcommittee. But this is not enough. With only a few dollars of investment on each resident of Spokane, which amounts to only 0.1% of the city budget, we can begin to build an infrastructure that would enable us to address systematically the various forms of discrimination and inequities in our city. Is the livelihood, health, and dignity of members of our communities worth that small investment in our city budget? Please don't tell me to wait for a few more years because I have already waited 20 years for Spokane to change. I urge city council members to make the commitment now to support our community proposal and fully fund the six positions for the Office of Civil Rights Equity and Inclusion in the 2022 city budget. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you for participating. I'm going to try Ryan Louie one more time. Ryan, if you're there, if you want to hit star three. All right. Ryan, welcome to Spokane City Council. You have up to three minutes.
Thank you, Council President and council members for allowing me to speak tonight. I am part of the Asian Pacific Islander Coalition as the co-chair, and we had one of our first ever listening sessions with our community members. And one of the really interesting things that has been happening, especially through the rise of COVID and anti-Asian hate, particularly, well, most of the stories were from university students, but that's a huge, huge population in our community that brings a lot of diversity and different backgrounds to Spokane. But like Puyan was saying, many people leave because there's no, there's no safety or accountability for when things go wrong. So some of these students are being just kind of left behind because they're, after they make a report to their university, there's no action, there's no accountability. And what the Office of Civil Rights would do is provide more backup for these students to have action taken on their behalf and to hold even maybe the universities accountable. And so I'm just asking for y'all to create the fully staffed and adequately funded Office of Civil Rights Equity and Inclusion as envisioned by the community proposal, fund the office in the 2022 budget, and help keep people like me and other students that call her in Spokane. Thank you.
Thank you. And then I have three more speakers left, and I'll just read them in order, and then I'll invite them to call. First is Terry Anderson, then Marley Hockendoner, and then Andrew Rolls. So Terry Anderson, if you're there, if you want to hit star three. Welcome to Spokane City Council. Terry, you have up to three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Terry Anderson, and I am the Director of the Spokane Office of the Tenants Union of Washington State. And I'm here to speak in favor of fully funding and creating a functioning Office of Civil Rights Equity and Inclusion. Spokane needs to provide resources and help to all citizens in Spokane and not just for those who have power or who have access to power. Currently, there is no agency in city government that investigates housing discrimination or tenants can call for help. That is why so many renters call our office to report complaints about landlords who do not maintain housing conditions or respond to requests for repairs or issue illegal notices and other issues. Because of the racial disparity in housing security in Spokane, we receive a disproportionate number of calls from Black, Indigenous, people of color tenants, tenants with disabilities, and single moms with young children. All of those tenants represent detected classes and are vulnerable to housing discrimination. It would be a great service to renters that the city of Spokane would create a functioning Office of Civil Rights who could investigate complaints so tenants do not have to live in fear and do not unnecessarily become homeless. I want to remind you that the Tenants Union of Washington State in Spokane receives zero funding from the city of Spokane, Spokane County, or the state of Washington. We operate four remote walk-in tenant clinics and talk to hundreds, if not thousands, of renters every year. The two-on-one information and referral service has told us that housing is their number one issue that callers call about, and the Tenants Union in Spokane is the number one agency they refer callers to. These numbers went up during the moratorium on evictions because of the number of violations that were reported by tenants. An Office of Civil Rights will be instrumental in prepaid rental relocation payments and enforcing municipal code violations on tenant protections once they are enacted, similar to what other cities in Washington do. The Tenants Union is a member of Greater Spokane Progress, and we support the efforts of all GSP members, SCAR, the Spokane Coalition Against Racism, and their members, and the Spokane Human Rights Commission, who have worked thoughtfully and thoroughly to make this office more than just an office for show, but the one that will fulfill a need that has been unmet for far too long. Everyone in Spokane should feel like we belong and that we are welcome and respected. This office demonstrates the commitment to justice and civil rights that we have neglected for far too long. I am proud to speak in favor of fully funding a functional Office of Civil Rights Equity and Inclusion. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. And that brings us to Marley Hockendoner. Marley, if you want to hit star three. All right, welcome to city council, Marley. You have up to three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Marley Hockendoner. I'm the resident, I'm a resident of Spokane and the Executive Director of Northwest Fair Housing Alliance, a nonprofit fair housing organization based in Spokane and serving 17 counties in eastern and central Washington. The mission of Northwest Fair Housing Alliance is to eliminate housing discrimination and to ensure equal housing opportunity for the people of Washington State through education, counseling, and advocacy. As Education, as Executive Director of Northwest Fair Housing Alliance, I support the development and funding of a Spokane Office of Civil Rights Equity and Inclusion. I urge the council to go beyond funding three positions and dedicate funding for six positions as recommended by the Greater Spokane Progress Community Work Group proposal. An Office of Civil Rights for a city of this size should be adequately staffed and funded in order to effectively identify, respond to, and address a variety of civil rights issues, including but not limited to hate crimes, employment discrimination, housing discrimination, discrimination in schools, public accommodations and accessibility for people with disabilities, and meaningful community equity and inclusion initiatives. An Office of Civil Rights must be sufficiently staffed with trained advocates, investigators, and educators who know which of many federal, state, and municipal laws apply. Together, these laws create a decentralized and complex system of enforcement, which the public often has difficulty navigating. An Office of Civil Rights needs to be staffed with sufficient people who understand these systems to make referrals to appropriate agencies, have jurisdiction to investigate, advocate, or enforce the various civil rights laws. In addition to complaint intake and referral, a fully staffed Office of Civil Rights should be instrumental in identifying and making recommendations to city policymakers. For instance, with respect to housing, advising on how to update Title 18 to be more effective. The city took an important step several years ago by enacting Title 18 of the Municipal Code, sending a message that discrimination based on housing and employment is unlawful in our community. However, since its adoption, all the protected classes in Title 18 have been added to other state and federal laws. And unlike Title 18, the Federal Fair Housing Act and Washington law against discrimination provide compensatory damages for prevailing complainant. Title 18 only imposes an infraction fine, thus most housing discrimination complainants opt to file with HUD or the Human Rights Commission. Similarly, an Office of Civil Rights should also aid policymakers in furthering the city's legal obligation to affirmatively further fair housing by developing strategies to overcome already identified and newly emerging impediments to fair housing, including conducting audits of zoning, building, and other codes to identify possible amendments to eliminate barriers to housing opportunities. In sum, civil rights work is complex, ever-changing, and requires many dedicated and highly trained staff. I hope you will provide this new office with sufficient resources to succeed. Thank you.
Thank you, Marley. And the last speaker on this issue is of the budget is Andrew Rolls. Andrew, if you want to hit star three.
The first--
Yep. Welcome, Andrew. You've got up to three minutes.
Oh, yes. Thank you, Council President. Thanks again for some time to offer four suggestions for the budget this evening. The first is that the council should prioritize, along with the mayor, an expansion of emergency shelter services in order to meet or exceed the minimum requirements for emergency beds. As has been noted earlier tonight, this will allow the police department to return to enforcing sit and lie and the other laws that appear to be going underenforced or unenforced due to Martin versus Boise. Interpreting Martin versus Boise this way may actually be debatable, but in order to return to unobstructed viaduct sidewalks, reduced amounts of camping in and around downtown, and in order to get people into something better than being out in the elements, providing emergency shelter beds should be an urgent priority. Secondly, public safety should be the highest priority of this budget and of any budget, but because of the seemingly worsening conditions, the amount of time it will take for actions needed to improve the conditions present on our streets, the mayor's various proposals to fund the continuing cleaning of sidewalks in downtown, the removal of debris from the camps, the removal of junk vehicles from neighborhoods are important. So please do continue to fund those and related programs as requested by the mayor. Thirdly, in discussion with the DSP board and staff, officials at our community court have noted that the slowdown of community court decisions is in part due to having only one prosecutor available. We recommend funding an additional prosecutorial position so that the community court can get back to pre-COVID levels of casework. And finally, as you know, the legislature funded an expansion of treatment for addiction and mental illness programs at this past session by over $160 million. Please work to secure as much of that funding for the city of Spokane as possible, and this may include earmarking city funds in order to help build the case for increased funding in Spokane. Consider assigning funds for this purpose to act as a match when state agencies begin assigning funds for jurisdictions to treatment programs. And that concludes my remarks. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I don't know if there's, that's the end of our budget hearing. What I don't remember is whether we need to continue that till next week. You know if we actually have a hearing on budget night or not, or is that the end of it?
We typically haven't. We typically close it before the budget ordinance is considered.
Okay. All right, then I'm looking for a motion to close the 2022 budget hearing.
It's been moved.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of closing the budget hearing for 2022 indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, nay, any abstentions? All right, the budget hearing is closed, and that brings us to one last speaker for the evening for our open forum, and that's Nicolette Ockletree. Nicolette, if you want to hit star three. All right, Nicolette, welcome back to Spokane City Council this evening. You have up to three minutes.
Thank you, City Council President Beggs, and thank you for moving the last hearing on the agenda to the beginning of the agenda so the Downtown Spokane Partnership, Mark Richards and staff, could, as you say, get on with their lives. It's not as though the rest of us are waiting to cook or eat dinner or get on with our own lives. You'll have to forgive me if my comments tonight are extra spicy. I narrowly escaped a deadly accident today. The streets are dangerous, and my nerves are frazzled. I'm also a bit irritated that a local activist organization advertised a call for folks to sign up to speak during the budget hearing, but actually did not sign up all the folks who used their form to sign up, regardless of the fact that the form itself indicates that if you sign up on their form, you will be signed up to speak during testimony. This is a frustrating tactic I've witnessed in the past, and it really is just a tactic to pick and choose and curate and filter who's allowed to voice their opinion. I was a little bit, I thought it was odd that the Downtown Spokane Partnership was giving testimony on the 2022 legislative agenda earlier. I was under the impression that they were not supposed to be engaging in lobbying per their contract. I'm grateful that the city made a video advertising rental assistance for landlords and tenants. It's important to let citizens know that these funds are available if they need them. What is not helpful is factual inaccuracies in such an endeavor. Not only did the video contain outright falsehoods, but the images in the video were borderline propaganda. The video likely gave some folks the impression that they did not qualify for assistance, and so they will not seek that assistance. I'd also like to say that if you Google "warming center Spokane," the listing for Cannon's Warming Shelter will pop up. But if you click that and you call or type in the number and call, 509-281-7120, you'll get a message saying the number is no longer in service. If you call 311, it will say the service you are attempting to use has been restricted or is unavailable. What good do these services actually do if they're nearly impossible to access and utilize? Folks are sleeping in the snow, and if they do happen to have a cell phone and they try to figure out where a warming center is, they're going to get a number that's no longer in service, and if they try to call 311, they're going to get a service that's no longer in service. Truth Ministry is what I called tonight. I got an answering machine. I'm running out of time, so thank you for the time that I've had.
Thank you. And that brings us to the end of our legislative meeting this evening. We have one more scheduled city council meeting for the year, next Monday on the 13th. We're hoping to pass the budget and several other matters that evening. In the meantime, everyone, please take care, especially with snowy and icy streets out there, and if you can, take care of someone else. It's a pleasure working with everyone, and really, we had well over 20 public testimonies tonight, and they were mostly short and to the point. I appreciate that. Take care, everyone. Word adjourned.